Okay, I'm calling to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for town of Lakeville Thursday, November 18th. It is 7:01 PM. And we are missing a couple of members, but let me start with the opening remarks in regards to the remote meetings here. In accordance with the provisions allowed by chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the November 18th meeting, public reading of zoning board appeals will be openly. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lacam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at later date. Okay, let's jump right in. We have two agenda items this evening. The first one is the Green hearing, which I will open. As I scroll to the notice, "The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, 13th at 7:00 to hear the petition of Robert Green Jr. A variance under 4.0 use regulations, 5.0 intensity regulations, 6.3.1 accessory uses, and 8.2.2 variances is requested to install a 14-foot by 20-foot storage shed on a vacant, non-conforming lot. Property site insured out." Pursuant to the provisions allowed by chapter 20, this hearing is going to be held remotely. Okay. We have some comments from the, from a variety of different boards here. And I think what I'm going to start off with, as I usually do, it looks like you're looking to put, this is to the petitioner, put a storage facility on the vacant, non-conforming lot. So why don't you, I'm assuming, Mr. Green, you're representing yourself?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, why don't you give that kind of the overview of what you're looking to do and why you think you need it to be done and why you think we should approve it?
Sure. I'll talk fast because I have an 8:20 deadline as well.
Well, fortunately, you're up for us, so the people have to have to.
Out of respect for number two, I'll talk fast. So I assume that the zoning board received the drawings that I sent?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So my name is Robert Green Jr. I have a long history with Clark Shores. My parents used to own a cottage on Island Road, and we used to, summer at the beach down in Lakeville. My father and a neighbor bought a Zero Shore Avenue sometime in the late 60s to put their boats on, way back when you could actually get boats all the way down Hathaway Brook, and there was two docks back there at the end of Zero Shore Ave. When my parents and the other neighbor sold their homes on Island Road, sometime in the early 80s, I bought the lot from my father because he just didn't see the use of it anymore. So for the past 40 years, I've been paying the taxes down there and, you know, kind of keeping the lot clean as best as I could. But as I approach my retirement, I'd like to put, I have a wave runner and a bunch of kayaks, and I'd like to be able to put a storage shed on the lot and put my wave runner and the kayaks in there. And I have a motorhome that I'd like to occasionally stop by there and enjoy the lake for a couple of days, for a couple of weekends a year. I don't anticipate using the lot very often. I have vacation homes in Lone Mountain and North Myrtle Beach, as well as in Hampstead, New Hampshire. But of Clark Shores, it's been a part of my family history for a long time, and I'd like to be able to go down there and enjoy the lake.
Okay. Let me read a couple of memos from other boards into the record, and then we can discussion. So we actually have a memo from the Board of Health dated November 10th to the zoning board of appeals. "We received a copy of the petition for hearing for hearing for Zero Shore Ave. Since there will be no water connection to the shed, then there will be no need for a septic system. Therefore, the Board of Health has no objection to the proposed storage shed." We have another memo dated November 15th from the Conservation Commission to the zoning board. "I have reviewed the petition to construct a 14-by-20-foot storage shed at the reference property. It is my understanding that the lot will be cleared of vegetation prior to the construction. Several questions need resolution. What type of flooring/foundation is proposed? Will the shed be constructed on-site, or is it prefab? What is the distance from the shed to the edge of the pond or small stream? How many guest parking spots are proposed? Will there be any fencing or tree removal? Since this location is in the buffer zone and approximate to wetland areas, the commission may require filing a request for determination of applicability." Applicability, excuse me. Final memo, I believe, is from the Planning Board dated November 15th to the zoning board. "At their Thursday, November 4th meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition." Mr. Green, have you or are you aware of the comments of the Conservation Commission in regards to the questions they have and the potential filing or request for determination?
I, I, I am not, but I can answer those questions very quickly. If you, if you could repeat, there was like three or four bullet points.
Yeah, well, just, I'm gonna, I'll propose the questions, and you can answer them, and that way we'll know. But our purview isn't the same as the Conservation Commission, although we, we do want you to be okay with the Conservation Commission. We, we try not to stay, you know, go out of our lane. But, but it could be helpful for us to know that, so I will propose those. I just don't want you to think if we, if we're all set with it, it means they're all set with it.
I agree.
What type of flooring foundation is proposed?
There is no foundation. It's gonna sit on blocks.
Okay, so it'll sit on blocks and the floor will be the actual ground itself?
No, it'll be a wood floor.
Okay.
Yep.
Will the shed be constructed on-site, or is it prefab?
State line sheds is gonna construct it on-site.
Okay. What is the distance from the shed to the edge of the pond or small stream, whatever that body of water is?
That's Hathaway Brook, and the lot is 90 feet deep, leaving the last 45 to 50 feet undisturbed.
Okay. How many guest parking spots are proposed? How many vehicles would you have on the lot at any one time?
Maximum of two.
Two, including the motorhome RV, or two in addition to?
No, if the motorhome is there, it'll be one. If it's just passenger vehicles, it would be maximum of two.
Okay. Will there be any fencing or tree removal?
Their fencing is already existing. It was put up by the neighbors. I will not be putting up any new fencing. There's a wood fence to the border of 34, and there's a chain link fence to the border of 28. And there will be no vegetation taken down by trees.
Okay, great. And again, I point out in the letter, and you can, you can request it right from the building department. They should be able to provide the letter from the Conservation Commission that was sent to us.
Right.
You'll have a few, reach out to Concom. So actually, this, um, well, let me do this for some. Amy, since you're here, and I know you're not here for this hearing, but I don't know if you've been, you've heard what we, what the petitioner is looking to do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the liberty of using your expertise since we have you. So I know variances have a, you know, a much higher threshold to cross, and I'd be interested in your opinion off of that, if there is a way for us to potentially approve this. Again, I'm gonna go around the horn and talk to the rest of the board members and have them question and whatnot, but some guidance as to what we may need to ask and what we could do to potentially, what would make this work, I guess?
Sure. So there's, you know, there's three prongs to the, to the variance. And the first one is how is the, how is the property unusual? So the, it's either soil, shape, or topography. So is there something unusual about the property that makes it, that this is the only place you can put that, that you need your variance because the property is unusual in size, shape, or topography? No, soil, shape, or topography, sorry. And then, what is your hardship? So what is your hardship that, is there, is it a hardship that you can't store things? You know, and then the other one, the other, the third prong is, you know, does it derogate from the purposes of the zoning bylaw, which most likely this, this doesn't. I mean, the zoning bylaw allows sheds, you know, storage. So I'm not sure if it actually, you know, I'm not sure if that, I think that prong is probably fulfilled. That's always the easiest prong. But so it's the first one that everyone has trouble with, is what is the unusual, what is the unique soil shape or topography that makes this lot different than every other lot in the zoning district?
On Shore Ave, there are actually lots that are 25 feet wide, like mine, that house, that have homes on them. This lot was never built to house a home. I think 90% of the properties in Clark Shores violate the zoning setback regulations.
So actually, just to, just to jump in real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt, sir. They, they don't violate, they don't violate the zoning regulations. They are, they are pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, grandfather, I, I understand. So the, the issue here is, the lot is 25 feet wide, and any structure I put there is gonna not conform to the setback regulations.
So my question, I guess, to Amy is, I'm, and I'm one vote, having to be the chairman, but I'm not necessarily opposed to the project. I don't think it's gonna necessarily change the character of the neighborhood or whatnot. But is, how would we, if we wanted to frame this, to allow the bit, allow it, how, you know, what would be your expectation?
It would be the shape of the, the shape of the lot creates a situation where anything that's placed on the lot, or any structure on the lot would, would, you know, violate the setback regulations.
And, and we're safe doing that. And Mr. Green, just so you know, my, the reason I ask a lot of these questions is, we could eventually approve any petition that comes before us, but, but that can be appealed. And you don't want to go through a process where we approve something that isn't soundly based and doesn't have a good argument behind it, because if someone decides to appeal it, you're, you're on your own on that. So, okay, thank you for the input, Amy. Now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open up questions to the, the rest of the board. Thoughts, if they have any questions for the petitioner? Jerry?
Yeah, just a question on impervious coverage. I'm just doing rough calculations on my side, but Mr. Green, can you comment on what the total impervious coverage is you're expecting?
You talking about for the parking area?
Both structure and parking area. And driveway as well.
So the, the square footage of the building is 14 by 20. Again, it's just gonna sit on blocks. I was planning on putting crushed stone in between the, the concrete CMU blocks. And I was gonna use a, on the entry drive, you know, for the parking spots, I was gonna use a, a permeable mix along the roadway. So I don't know if that answers your questions or not.
Well, Jerry's driving it. What's, what's the total coverage between all of the parking area that you're gonna, you're gonna set in place with the bricks and the actual structure itself? Is it gonna, is it gonna be 20% coverage of the lot, 30%? I'm not sure if we can.
It's probably, you know, yeah, looking at the drawings, it's probably 30%, but it's, that 30% is all at the roadway. I'm staying away from the brook.
Okay. Well, the issue there is, correct me if I'm wrong, and Jeff will correct me if I'm wrong, 25% is what we're supposed to have, correct, Jeff?
That's correct.
So you're, the, an issue you're gonna have is, you're, obviously, you're, you're coming to us because you're in a non-conforming lot anyways, and you're looking for an exception. But if you were gonna have 30% impervious coverage, you'd be looking for a second exception. I honestly can't tell you, and I've on, I won't say a lot of it on the board at this point, but I can't tell you when we've ever granted anyone in excess of the 25%. I mean, this, this board will deliberate over a half a percent more than you're supposed to be. So would you be able to cut that back?
Most definitely. I, you, this is the first I've heard of that requirement, and I'm most definitely keeping under that.
If we were to move forward and approve it, I would probably suggest that the, you know, contingency would be that you're gonna have to be under the 25% to Jerry's point.
Make it a condition.
Yeah, make it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Jerry went back on mute, so I'm assuming that was his only question. Amy, where this is not a residence, and it's, it is just a shed, are there any issues with us approving it if we agree that the size meets the, or the shape, I should say, meets the threshold?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Nate didn't have an issue with the use, correct?
I do not believe so.
And so the other thing is that he didn't apply for a variance, as far as I can tell. He didn't apply for a variance for lot coverage, so he won't be getting a variance for lot coverage. So we, we had a condition.
I'm sorry. No, no, I, I was reading off of the, off of the posting, which references very, I bet.
So did he apply? I didn't, I didn't see it on his application. That's all I have. Okay, so, so we could, we could condition the variance that, that lot coverage has to be complied with, which I think is probably the safest thing to do. But in any event, Nate's not gonna let him put it up if he's gonna violate the lot coverage. So, but, but I don't think there's any problem with putting it in the, in the decision.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board of the petitioner at this point? I know we have some other folks on the, on the call, the meeting, that are here for this petition, this hearing. Would anybody like to make any comments or have any thing they would like to add? Please somehow indicate to Lacan by raising your hand or doing something so that we can recognize you. Bill Furtado.
Yeah. I have a question. Now, now this shed, can this turn into a cottage? What stops it from turning into a cottage without a septic system, without running water?
Well, I mean, there's, there's a few things that'll stop it. I mean, you, you're technically supposed to go before a bunch of boards in order to be able to turn it into habitational. If he's gonna put a septic in, the Board of Health, if he's gonna, this, this, if we were to issue the permit, the permit for this, it would be conditioned that it would be non-habitable, and, and it would be for what he's applying for, just to put up a shed. So if he decided to, or if anyone decided to change it to a actual cottage to be habitable, they would need to come back to the building department, we'll say, and go through the proper channels.
There's, there's no way you could get the proper distance from a Durbin well to a septic system. There's no way you can get that lot to perk. There, there's no way that that could be turned into a habitable cottage, and I have no plans to, to do that.
Any other questions or comments?
What's, what's the length of the lot? I don't have the plan in front of me.
I believe it's, it's slightly over 90 feet from those three to the brook.
It wouldn't qualify for a building lot in the state. The state's minimum requirement is 5,000.
So I don't think you need to worry anyone putting a residence there, sir. Do we have any other comments or questions? Lacan, anybody on Facebook indicating they have a?
No comments from Facebook.
Mr. Chairman, would you also maybe want to limit the amount of time, the, I can't remember what he said, that he was gonna park down there, some kind of recreational vehicle?
Yeah, I would suggest that if we, if we were to move forward, put some conditions in there, not just to lock cover, the impervious coverage, which you, you pointed out Nate would enforce anyway. But in addition to that, you know, if he is gonna bring the trailer, the RV down there or whatnot, that we would wanna put something to memorialize it in the, in the special permit that you can't keep it there all summer. You know, we're gonna put some type of limitation. And I think you said two weeks. I, I'm not sure you, you need to be that specific, but, you know, I would probably suggest we limit it to, you know, 30 days or something along those lines. So we don't have you, we don't have you, or whoever may purchase it or take the property over after you decide they're gonna park a RV down there from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, having said that, is anyone of the board interested in making a motion? Go ahead, Jerry.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, can you just, what is the condition then for the, the limits on the time for RV parking we're proposing?
Uh, I, I'm, I throw out 30 days as a, as a, just a starting point, but I, I personally think 30 days is probably fine. I mean, if you guys want to shrink it down to less or increase it, I'm, it's up to the board, so we can discuss that if anybody has a suggestion.
Does anybody else have a preferred time? More or less?
I think closer to two weeks would be better.
I'm fine with that.
You good with two weeks, Mr. Green?
I'm, I'm fine with that. As I said, I'm, I, I, I'm gonna run out of water in three or four days. So I, I.
Here's, here's the, keep in mind, I think the condition's gonna stay not two weeks, and then you can come back in two weeks, and you can come back. I think it's gonna be an aggregate number, and we may need to be a little creative here, because I think what we want to guard against is, again, not necessarily to say you would do it, but somebody shows up and now all of a sudden this does become their summer home, and they're there every single weekend from Thursday to Sunday from Memorial Day. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it sounds like it's intended to be a place where you can store some watercraft that you use periodically. And, you know, you'll pull a car in there, and, you know, you may do that on a little bit more of a regular basis. But if you're gonna park an RV there, again, I don't think we'd want it to turn into a weekend summer home.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I would like to have, you know, 30 days annually, but maximum of 14 days consecutive.
What's the board think? Jeff, what do you think of that?
I think that's fine.
Anyone else think something else would be more appropriate, or did I assume everyone's silences were in agreement with 30-day max, no more than 14 days at a time? Okay. All right. Were you gonna attempt to make a motion, Jerry, or we just wanted to clarify?
I, I, I wanted a clarification first, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll make the motion to approve the variances with the following conditions. One, that it's non-hab, non-habitable, less than 25% impervious coverage, and we limit the times to 30 days max, and 14 consecutive days for Mr. Green's RV parking.
30 days on an annual basis.
30 days on an annual basis, yes.
I remember.
That motion sound right, Amy? Okay.
It does. It does. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote in no particular order. Chris Campo.
Yes.
Jeff Youngquist.
Yes.
Chris Shee.
Yes.
Jerry? I am in favor as well. So the motion carries unanimously. And I am gonna let Kathy walk you through the process at this point, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Kathy. Tell them what's up next.
All right. So the ZDA will get this paperwork done in two weeks, and then it's submitted to the town clerk. It stays in the clerk's office for the appeal, 20-day appeal period. If there's no appeals, she'll sign off on it, and we'll send it out to you. You read, you register at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, and then you bring the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Your morning, Mark.
That's it?
That's it for you. You're done, Mr. Green. Good luck. I'm just moving my computer around here to get a little more juice in it, because my power is low. And I don't think anybody wants me to leave quite yet. Or maybe they do, but you're not gonna get that luck, so.
Okay, Tritz.
Thanks. Okay. Give me one second here to move on to our next agenda item. Which to some degree is fortunate, we have it tonight, because we had Amy to help us walk through that one.
That was a little unique.
All right. We are opening our second hearing of the night. "The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 21st, 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Bud's Goods and Provisions Corp. Special Permit Number 7.4.6 is requested to operate an adult-use marijuana establishment as marijuana product manufacturer and marijuana transporter at 475 Kenneth Welch Drive as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. The property is owned by Green Peak LLC. And pursuant to the provisions allowed by chapter 20, this is a remote hearing as well." So I know that there was a transfer of license and a sale involved here, so I think maybe what I am going to start off with is ask who is representing the applicant? Who's representing Bud's? Is that you, Phil?
Yep, it is.
Okay, why don't you give us, I was gonna say Reader's Digest, but as much of a version as you think we need to bring us up to speed to where we are, and I'm guessing we don't necessarily have to get as deep into the processes as we did initially, because we've kind of already, to some degree, proved this anyway, but there was a sale involved. So if you can update the board as to where we are, and then, Amy, please feel free to interject at any point.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll try and clarify it, because I think it's, it sort of got a little bit confused, but I think it's easy enough to clear up. Again, Phil Silverman, I'm here for Bud's Goods and Provisions, and we're seeking a special permit for a, it's a marijuana product manufacturing and transporter business at 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. I think you're familiar with the building. What, what we're trying to do here is actually just use a smaller portion of the building. We're only gonna use about 60 some, 700 square feet of the building. And yes, you have seen this property before, several different versions of, of what's been going on. There was, previous to this, in fact, it was a client of mine that had come in to obtain a special permit to do both cultivation and product manufacturing. As it turned out, they did not get their financing. That project did not go forward. So actually, there was no sale that ever went through. It's, it's still, oh, well, actually, now, now that you mention it, because it is, Green, Green Peak did buy this from the other owners, but the other transaction that was supposed to go through, which was gonna be to this new entity that was gonna run a business there, that did not go through. So Green Peak owns this, and they are working with Bud's Goods and Provisions. I think it's under a lease. And what they're trying to do, it's a much simpler operation. And I'm gonna let Ben Nadalney is here from the company. And if I could, if we could allow him to just give you the Reader's Digest version of what this business does, I think it'll, it'll help clarify what's going on. Can we, Ben, can you unmute yourself, and we'll see if we can have you come on?
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Benjamin Nadalney, the VP of Operations for Bud's Goods and Provisions for the project at 475 Kenneth Welch. Yeah, you've seen us several times from as far back as 2018, Green Peak. And then, again, as Phil, Phil mentioned, we kind of went through a process of selling it. They couldn't get their finances together, so we decided to. we kind of went through a process of selling it. Um they couldn't get their finances together, so we decided to uh maintain it. And our uh next objective, pardon me. Our next objective is just doing some in-house manufacturing on some products that we're selling in our retail stores. We currently have two retail stores open, one in the town of Worcester and then one not far north of Lakeville in Abington. And we have a couple of products we sell in our stores that do well for us. And so we're just kind of bringing some of that packaging and co-packaging in-house for those products. And that's basically it.
Yeah. So uh again, all all, you know, previously you had seen a a big cultivation operation, all sorts of uh HVAC units, all sorts of electrical, uh and also, you know, product manufacturing, extraction. None of that is going on here. Really what it is, is gonna be flour brought in, uh that's gonna be packaged for sale in their stores or you know, some other products, uh some some other types of uh, you know, non-flower products that are just gonna be packaged there. And that's really all it is. You would probably be seeing anywhere from twelve to fifteen employees uh employed by this business. No more than about twelve onsite at any given time. Uh and there's twenty-three parking spaces here, so there's more than enough parking. Um and really not a lot of changes to the site. Um and just sort of a a much less impactful use, but you will see uh the same security provisions that I know this board has seen over and over again with other facilities. You've got the same video cameras. You've got the same uh access controls, alarms, uh the secure vault. All of the things that the Cannabis Control Commission requires, you will see at this facility. It's just a a much more minimal operation than I think uh, you know, what we had planned before. So and it happy to answer any other questions as well.
Uh okay, thanks, Phil and Benjamin. Um it's it definitely based on your presentation and and the information you you provided, it does. It appears to be um less impactful uh than than previous. Uh but before I open it up to the board, I'm gonna uh ask Town Council if um she has any comments that she'd like to uh to make or questions or clarifications that you have for the petitioner.
I don't, um actually, shockingly. I I I really, I don't have anything. Um I guess one of the things that we we would want to um find out from the applicant, which I'm sure we will, is um how many, how many trucks and what size of the trucks? Because they're not only product manufacturing, they're also going to be a transporter. So that means that um trucks will be leaving the site with the goods, but also because they're product manufacturing and they don't have a cultivation site or they don't have cultivation operation onsite, they would have to bring in the flour in order to send it out. So we're talking about double trucks. So I guess we want to know the size of the trucks and um the the um intensity of the trucks. But other than that, um we do have the prior, um you know, the prior site plan where we do, we do have sufficient parking. We've already gone over the um the security, um you know, things, uh the dumpster, things like that. We've we've really already um discussed, so.
Right. The only change is we're gonna have trucks going both ways.
Right. I can speak to that.
I was just gonna say, if one of either Phil or probably Benjamin, you're gonna probably be better able to address that. So yeah, well, how many, how big, how often?
So we we have uh an interior space and it's not gonna be trucks. It will simply be vans. Um, you know, cannabis isn't at that scale yet, and I can't see it out of this building being that scale. Things are brought around and um um vans, they have to have cameras in the cargo area and cameras also in the driver's seat area, two drivers in any given time. But for in our facility, we'll be bringing the vans into the building and shutting the door before there's any access to the rest of the building. It won't be if any trucks were to come, it would be deliveries of perhaps maybe cardboard casing or of some sort, but the the bulk flower going in and then the finished product coming out will just be in vans that will disappear inside the building.
But Ben, uh they're they're trying to understand the number of trips. I I think when we spoke, you know, I've been led to understand you might see one or two uh van trips a day. Maybe on an unusual day, three van trips in and out. Is that about right?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, that's that's correct.
And then will there be any off-hours?
Um, no, a- at this point, not in in the plan. You know, we really want to operate and just like um um our retail stores, you know, a lot of the business happens in the business hours, you know, Monday through Friday. And so right now, we're not planning on it, but you know, we might have some manufacturing happen, but delivery doesn't classically happen over the weekend.
So how much, so when will the operation be um occupied with employees? Is it going to, what what are the hours of operation? Proposed hours of operation?
Um, we probably would get started, I I I believe it's in our application, eight to, I think we had six, Phil, I don't know if you want to correct me.
I think that's right.
So so I guess I'm confused because if you're going to have vans come off-hours, they're gonna have to come in because you said everything is offloaded inside. So
Correct. So yeah.
Does that mean you're gonna have people there overnight or how?
No, 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 we won't have vans come in off-hours is kind of what I was saying. It's just it could be because of the fact that it doesn't work for the rest of the industry. That's why we're not, that's why we're not planning to have vans coming in off-hours. Sorry.
All right. I must have missed her. Sorry.
Let me ask you this. Um and and maybe you're, you know, you don't know what the future holds. Um and that may may be your, 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 the way you're delivering that the message is that, you know, we could be here two or three years from now and maybe it's grown to that degree that you do need to have off-hours or add a shift. Uh but my suggestion and recommendation would be is, well, you know, if we were to go forward and and issue the permit, it would be with the hours you have now. If it does grow to that extent and you are gonna have to go to second shifts, third shifts, um you'd have to come back before this board because one of the concerns is with off-hour deliveries, we'd want to make sure there was some safeguards in place uh for the for the neighborhood, even though it's an industrial park that goes back up to other areas. And 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 the industrial neighbors would want to make sure that you have the safeguards in place. I mean, the best thing in the world could be for you guys to grow to that point where you have that much business, but if we don't plan properly, um it could get congested and cause problems for other folks there. So I can see Phil nodding, so I I think he's
It's a very reasonable condition. That's
Yeah, correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um. You good, Amy, at this point?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, rest of the board have questions? Um I I'm assuming where Amy didn't have a lot of questions, that it that they're they're following form with what had been previously permitted and and it's definitely probably gonna be less impactful than before. So that's a, that's a good thing.
The only, the only thing I want to be sure, we're not having retail sales there, are we?
No retail sales, no onsite consumption, nothing like that.
Okay.
So um so so, Mr. Chairman, just so um just so you know, I I'm sorry, Jerry, I think I jumped in ahead of you. I'm sorry about that. But um they did, they did submit a very um comprehensive project narrative. So that that's the reason I don't have a lot of questions. They kind of answered them all in that for me, so um
Well, the good news is
They have given us all the info.
They gave you all the info and you were happy with the info they gave you.
I I'm okay with it. Yep. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Jerry, did you have a, did somebody, was somebody gonna ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna ask a question of um probably Mr. Nadalney. Just um just reading through the um your overview here about the fractional distillation process. Is that a process that's gonna occur at on Welch Drive?
No. Um if anything, we would possibly pilot some projects for our, again, for only our own retails um of some things, but we are not gonna be doing any extractions of any sort in that place. We might do some mixing, modifications, but we're not gonna do any distraction or distillation of extraction in that facility. It, you know, we have the dream of it, but at this point now, no, to the, we're not, we're not planning to do any of that. And we understand that that would need to come with a lot more um um permission than just putting it online.
Yeah, so I guess I I'm kind of confused. And so you're taking un- un- already treated flour that's been through the distillation process?
Right. Yeah, so if um, so you know, piloting projects where it would, you know, cannabis goes through an extraction process and then that extra process might get refined a little more, we would bring that product into our facility. We would, there would be nothing prior to that. So there's all the, all manual extraction happens somewhere else. We don't have anything to do with that part.
Okay. So this is mainly just a process where you're combining?
Blending, correct. At most blending, yeah.
Okay, there, better word. Okay. And so the anticipated use is never gonna, at this point, you don't foresee having this distillation or the extraction process happening at at Welch Drive?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, do we have any questions from anyone else on the call or anyone on Facebook, Lake Camp?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay. Don't see anyone else raising their hand or waving at me. Uh let me just read into the record comments we've received from other boards. Uh the Planning Board, their November fifteenth meeting uh and a memo to the zoning board at their Thursday, October fourteenth meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing for the Board of Appeals. The Board recommends that the applicant have suitable containment for the loading loading of a vehicle, whether it be inside the building, in a garage, or outside the building, in a fenced area, as long as it can be done safely and securely. Okay, and I believe that we have addressed that in the sense that the vehicles, correct, come wrong, uh Phil or Benjamin, are going to be going inside of the building to do all of their loading and unloading, correct?
Correct, correct. They drive inside the building.
Um, oops, I'm going backwards on my screen here. Hang tight. Uh okay, we also have a email memo from the Conservation Commission dated October eighteenth to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I reviewed the application for hearing on the referenced property. Inspection of the site has revealed wetland areas on three sides of the existing building. Construction activities were also observed in the parking area on the eastern side. It's my understanding that construction is proposed for the interior only. No action will be required as long as construction activity is limited to the interior of the building. Outdoor construction and storage of materials in the bucket zone may require an RDA. Everything being done inside, correct, guys?
Correct.
And
There's, there is a gravel road that's going out around uh for fire access that was requested by the fire department.
Right.
Uh but that's it.
Okay. All right, just make sure that the construction stays inside and even the storage of materials stays well away from that wetland area and you'll and you'll stay on Concom's good side.
Yep.
Uh final memos from the Board of Health dated October twentieth to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We received a copy of the petition for hearing of four seventy-five Kenneth Welch Drive. The petition states on page fourteen that this permit application would not be, would not necessitate modifications of the existing utilities provided as part of the building infrastructure. This is incorrect because the lot was approved for a new septic system on nine twelve eighteen. But the system was never installed and that approval has expired. The applicant will be required to resubmit septic plans for the approval and install the system prior to the occupancy of the building. The Board of Health has no objections to the proposed use, providing a new septic plan is submitted and installed prior to the occupancy. So um as you may have heard on the prior hearing, um we try to stay in our lane here. That's the Board of Health's purview. But um if you don't comply with them, um you won't be able to occupy or the building owner doesn't comply with them, you won't be able to occupy. So are you aware, are you aware of the the septic?
Uh, I, Ben, uh I'm not sure. We we are now at a minimum.
Yeah, we understood it that since we weren't changing that use to do all of that um cultivation and everything, since it's just simply you know, we had twelve employees that we weren't gonna have to change it. So that that is news to me as you're reading that out loud as well.
Okay. Amy, do we need to potentially condition that or is is the fact that it's, it was made, you know, we we read it into the record um that it's the Board of Health's purview anyways. We don't, we need to tie it?
Exactly. That's the Board of Health and um
Yeah, we we can issue a permit, but you you're not gonna get to do anything if the Board of Health doesn't sign off on their end on their stuff. Okay. So just make sure you you circle back with with them if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Your benefit. Um, okay. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Uh, looks like everything is uh in line in the, oh, go ahead, Jerry.
Just a quick, a quick question. Anything uh with the fire department inspection? Is required here? I'm not sure.
Uh, I do not believe any additional inspections uh from the fire department. As as Phil had referenced, um the the fire department has been out to this building before and has required some stuff from a, from the building standpoint. And I don't think the operation has changed to the degree where they would need to come and do an internal, but I, it's, I mean, if the board decides as a, as a unit that, you know, it's as a group that they want the fire department to be out there again. I don't know if this is a petition or have you spoken to the fire chief recently or?
Uh, I don't think we've spoken again. I mean, we knew, you know, we were aware, again, this was sort of through the last client that I had. Uh, we were aware that they wanted this fire access road, which we put in, but that was really the only comment uh that we had received.
Yeah, um, I, you know, my, and again, I'm I'm gonna plead a little ignorance here, but my my guess is that the fire department before the permit is issued is probably gonna have to sign off on it as well. Is that, am I safe in saying that, Amy?
Yeah, I'm sure Nate would have required that.
Yeah. Okay. So to your point, Jerry, oh, you're concerned if you want to make sure that, you know, whatever they've changed is still gonna be safety compliant. Uh I don't think they're gonna actually get the the permit issued until um until the fire department uh does their walkthrough.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay, so Amy, the process on this one, is it, is it as simple as a uh making a motion to approve or?
It is a motion to approve the um the special permit. Um the the find, there, you know, the findings will be that um will be based on the information that they've given us that in writing, um some of the comments from town boards, but um, yeah, that's it.
So we can issue the permit uh based on the findings that have been supplied uh to the board and town council, and we need to specify at this point that is the hours of operation or is that is is part of the findings?
That's in there. It's eight to six are the hours of operation. Um I guess um they would have to be in compliance with the um signage. So I I don't know if there were plans for signage, but they didn't ask for any kind of variance or anything from signage. So um and that's, that's mostly um, you guys are mostly gonna get overridden by the CCC on that, so.
Gotcha. Just be careful what you put up for signage. Uh don't put something too big without asking someone.
It 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 would be a a minimal sign on the door just for wayfinding. There's no, there's no need to draw any attention here.
I got you. Good move. Uh, okay, who wants to uh make a motion if anyone's so inclined?
Make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any further dis- Roll call vote. Chris Campo.
Yes.
Youngquist.
Yes.
Chris Sheedy. Did you say yes?
Yep.
Yay.
Uh, Jerry?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. Motion carries unanimously. Um Kathy, you get a break, I think, because Amy gets to Amy gets to explain, or they probably already know what what's what the next steps are. But do you need to add any more comments, Amy, or are we good?
Yeah, we'll have a decision filed with the town clerk within fourteen days and then um they have to record it. Bring it to Nate. They have to wait for the, oh, I'm sorry, they have to wait for the appeal period. Bring it, record it, bring it to Nate, and then they can pull a building permit if they want to.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, we have minutes to approve. The October twenty-first uh meeting minutes uh have been distributed. I'm assuming or hoping that uh folks have at least taken a quick glance at them and maybe I can get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Seconding.
Okay, Jerry made the motion. Jeff seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Chris Campo.
I wasn't present.
So you're recusing yourself. Jeff?
Hi.
Chris Sheedy.
Yeah.
Jerry.
Yeah.
Well, and I will vote in the meeting. So the motion carries. Um. Do we have any old business or new business to come aboard this evening?
Yes.
Yes. Can I call you back in a few minutes?
If Jeff would have just let the phone ring two more times, he would have been all set. All right, you came back just in time.
Mr. Chairman, if, um, if I may, um, if, if I may indulge, um, I, I just wanted to thank everybody for, um, for continuing the meeting from last month when I had a conflict. I appreciate that. So.
You, you, you had the best excuse in the world for a comment, so don't, no thanks necessary.
I have a varsity, um, football, uh, pasta party going on downstairs. So that's why I keep, yes.
Well, you gotta, you gotta tell these football guys, you know, Thursday nights that belong to us, not them.
They keep, they keep winning. I don't, you know, um.
Not a bad, not a bad.
Not a bad thing, I gotta say. It's not a bad thing, but.
Tells me it'll be over too soon, so I believe them.
I know. I know. So, yeah.
I like pasta.
There's a lot of food.
Well, in any case, um, I think we're good. Uh, do we, do we have, uh, stuff that's going to be on our meeting in December so far? Kathy, nothing right now, or do we have anything?
Uh, I had one and they had to drop something off and they took it back and it hasn't come back yet. So right now.
That, that may work out well. I'm not so sure I will be around for the December sixteenth meeting. So I think if we make it through another week without anyone coming in, we, we will be able to avoid a December meeting. Not that there's anything wrong with these meetings, but we may, we may be able to take a, take a Christmas or a holiday break, excuse me. Um, so if we don't see in December, um, we'll see everybody in January. And on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You're muted, Jeff, but I can read your lips. So Jeff made the mo- Who's, I guess, who else wants, and Jerry seconded it? All in favor, Chris Campo.
Yay.
Yes.
Yay.
Chris Sheedy.
Yay.
Jerry.
Yay.
I am in favor as well. And the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-three PM and we, we have plenty of time to get ready for the Patriots.